I'd like to call this February 11th Celine City Council Meeting to Order. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, present this evening is myself, council members Burgoyne, Girbaw, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. City staff present, we have Mr. Campbell, Assistant Clerk Rutledge, Police Chief Rennick, City Treasurer Bennett, DPW Director Fordice, Deputy Treasurer McDonough, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and we welcome for the first time this evening our new legal counsel, Mr. Scott Smith. Welcome and thank you for your work so far. And of course, as always, we encourage those of you in the audience to sign in in the back. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes.
Oh, did you want to ... okay.
Yeah, I was going to pull something off consent when the proper time comes.
Yep, we'll get to that in just a moment then, okay? So there's been a motion to approve the agenda, and that's been moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girbaw. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have no absences this evening, so we can dispense with that item. We have three presentations this evening, and we'll begin by inviting our very own Main Street Director Bob Rosenberg forward to give a monthly report. And I should also note that at the dais this evening, you will each have received a report dated February 11th, 2013, from Celine Main Street. And in addition to that, there is a ... what are we calling this? An outline of the Arts and Culture Committee's 2012 Annual Report, which Ms. Tahar will be referring to in just a moment. So I apologize, Bob. Please come forward. Welcome you here this evening.
Thank you. Let me begin by saying thank you to the council for giving us this opportunity to talk with you about Celine Main Street and what's happening, what's going on, and all the exciting things that are taking place in our organization. We've asked to address the council every month so we can do just that, keep you apprised of not only what's happening and what we're maybe a glimpse into the future and where we're headed, but also to show where the EDC dollars are going, where they're being spent, and what benefits we're getting from that expenditure. We gave you a packet passed out just a little bit ago. Has a cover sheet that looks like this. We thought that the best way to present the material is to show you the reports that we have to give to Michigan Main Street, which is our governing body, every month. And this will give you an insight into not only what they're expecting, but what we're doing as well. As you know, we are formulated by four teams. We have four teams. We have the Business and Economic Success Team, the Organization Team, the Design Team, and the Promotion Team, and we will go through the report just one team at a time, and I'll try to make this as expeditious as possible, but still cover it as thoroughly as possible. So the first report is from the BES Team, the Business Economic Success Team. Notice that we look at the new construction in the area, the buildings sold in the area, the new businesses that opened. By the way, this is a report from January, and we did have two businesses that opened in our downtown area. The Hensel Kenpo Karate Studio, which is at 106 North Ann Arbor, and the Bank of Ann Arbor Branch at 179 East Michigan. So we're excited to welcome both of them into our downtown area. Existing businesses that contracted or squeezed down, businesses that closed, and businesses that moved from our downtown area to another location, and that we'll note that bling thing has moved to another location. The next page has some of the work plans that are being pursued by that team at this point, by the Business Economic Success Team. And our first task, as it says in the first box, is to collect and review key planning and strategy documents that have been produced over the past 10 years, ensuring that Main Street efforts, the efforts that we have, are going to build on what's been identified and achieved so far, and that's the first task. We also have an update and enhance existing inventory of the downtown business buildings. There's a substantial amount of data, as it says there, and we're entering it into an access database. The data has gaps in it, and so it's going to require some work on our part and some updating. We're working on that currently. We also have a business survey and communication strategy that we're working on. Preliminary strategy has been designed and put forward. It's been completed, and we're hoping to implement that this month or next month at the very latest. And we have, we're proud to announce that we have a market analysis study that will be conducted through Michigan Main Street. We submitted an application. We were approved, and last week, last week is when we were approved. We're going to work with Downtown Professionals Network. We've had the chance to work with them before, or at least be a part of a training session with them, and they're pretty amazing, and we hope to get that started in the spring. The next page is the Promotions Team. Promotions Team is a very active team. Lots happening downtown, and most of it goes through the Promotions Team. The Winter Fest took place last month. We had approximately 310 attendees. We had 100 volunteer hours, which was pretty exciting stuff, and at a cost of $1,950, which to bring people downtown and have a great time seems like a pretty good price. Muta is Music Under the Arch. That takes place at Stone Arch. That starts in January and runs through May. The first event was in January. It was the Shanil Sisters. We had 120 attendees, which is a sellout, which was exciting. About 50 volunteer hours, and obviously we raised some money with that as well, as you can see. So Music Under the Arch, the next one is in February. It's always the third Thursday in the month, so it's the 21st of February, and the featured artist will be Jill Jack. The Winter, the Summer Music Series, we've already begun planning that for the 2013 season. We will submit to City Council for approval in a couple of weeks, and we're proposing to skip July 4th because it's a holiday, and August 8th because it is Summer Fest Week, and we don't want to get in the way of Summer Fest. Our wicked kickin' hoedown plans continue to materialize. We're looking for final approval at our board meeting, which is tomorrow evening. The hoedown's planned for the fall, and includes square dancing, music, fun, and food. And it's a fundraiser for our Celine Main Street. We also are planning the Mastodon Memorial Mayhem Run, which is going to take place over Memorial Day weekend. It's going to be presented to the Main Street Board in February at tomorrow's night's meeting. We just had a meeting just before this meeting with that committee, and we're making progress, no question about it. We plan to make it a fun and easy obstacle course for them to run. Ladies Night Out was held on February 7th. Attendance wasn't quite what we hoped for, but the restaurants were really busy. I think partly it was the weather, the threat of a horrible snowstorm that really didn't exactly materialize, but I think it kept a few people home. But anyway, it was still a great event, and we had a lot of ladies downtown. We have a public relations and marketing strategy that we're developing to promote our Celine effort and our Celine, our city of Celine, and we're hoping to partner with promote Celine, the promote Celine effort that's going on right now. Oktoberfest, I know it's early to talk about October, but we are beginning to plan Oktoberfest for 2013. The event will be held September, it's planned for September 27th and 28th this year. The Oktoberfest 2012 Harvest of the Arts Event netted approximately $6,000, and that is a fundraiser for Celine Main Street. And we are still working on the banner over the street, which is the banner that will run across, we hope, South Ann Arbor. The next page is the Design Team. The Design Team updates are as follows. We're working on a physical master plan, reviewing the physical master plans that were completed by the city in 2007 with a goal of confirming the plan and making additional recommendations so that the overall master plan for the future improvements can be approved. The next project is Bee Blumen. We are going to send in a request for proposal, RFP, soon to do our 2013 Bee Blumen campaign. We're selecting colors, and we're going to get that started real soon. The Public Improvements Plan, work plan is, the research is being done to enhance existing trash receptacles and planters in our downtown area, and we'll be working with the DPW to have benches painted, we hope. Development of gathering spaces, that's the alleyway, if you will, behind Mangiamo and Brecken Grill. Plans continue for that. We did receive a grant from Rotary that equaled $1,200, $600 from the local Rotary Club, and $600 a matching grant from the state, and a $500 amount of money from It's About Place, which was a contest, and we were awarded second place. So that's kind of exciting. And the Business Belt Basics is pending board approval. The dates aren't yet selected, but it's a workshop that will help us understand downtown better, and all about the benefits of historical preservation. When that's approved, we'll, or when it's finalized, we'll let you know. And the last report is from Organization, the Organization Team. I want to draw your attention to that first line. In January, we had 421 total volunteer hours. Celine is a city that has many wonderful people who give of their time very generously, and we're very appreciative of that. You can notice also the fundraising from last month. $1,500 from the public, $97.61 from private, and $750 in way of a sponsorship. The Organization Team is working on building our image. We did create a monthly e-newsletter in January that obviously will go out every month. We do weekly blogs and daily Facebook, Twitter posts, and we're just trying to make sure that people know what's happening in downtown Celine and through Main Street. We have a work plan for recruiting and retaining volunteers. We had a volunteer program. It got off to a good start. We have three sponsors for our volunteer program: Quantum Signal, Bank of Ann Arbor, and PSMI. We have wonderful t-shirts and "thank you" card printed, and we're adding training for our volunteers as we go along. We have a friend and fundraising program. We put out a corporate brochure, and we're getting some wonderful results already. We have our first sponsor, whom we'd like to thank, and that is Flatout. Appreciate them, and we'll be contacting more businesses in the future. The program outlook is, that we're talking about, holding a workshop to learn more about volunteer recruitment and retention, because that is very central and key to Celine Main Street and our success. And we have our annual meeting on February 28th at 6:30 at Stone Arch, and the public is welcome. Everyone is invited. Oh, and that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? I failed to acknowledge, and perhaps I should have, your Main Street Board Chair is also in the audience, Ms. Shupko. Ms. Shupko, would you care to make any comment this evening?
I'm good.
You're good?
I just want to see the new one.
I think we'd love to see the new t-shirt.
Yeah, I meant to bring it up here. I forgot. You two can have one of these t-shirts. All you need to do is volunteer with Celine Main Street.
Well, on that note, and I know I have said it before, but I'm going to say it again, just to echo something that Bob said just moments ago, which is volunteer contributions and serving on one of the four subcommittees is key to Celine Main Street's short-term and long-term success. So I know that a number of my council colleagues serve on one or more of the work groups. For those of you who do not, I encourage you to think about that. And for those of you in the audience and who may be watching this at home, I also encourage you to think about it. And I think if people have any questions, concerns, or are interested in serving, they should contact Bob or Cindy, okay? Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Thanks, Bob. Okay, moving on to the Arts and Culture Annual Report. Ms. Tahar.
So you have in front of you on the bench, there are also copies in the back, my low-tech PowerPoint. Having seen several people struggle with making PowerPoint work here, I thought paper might be better. I'm here to report on the 2012 Activities of the Arts and Culture Committee, another group that depends very heavily on volunteers' time and energy. In 2012, the membership of the committee included Nancy Byers, who is the chair, Larissa Farr, Heidi McClelland, Becky Poskowsky, Karen Ragland, Lori Rouse, Kathy Roth, April Scarlett. Mary Partridge is the staff liaison, and I'm the council rep in that group. This was a challenging year for us in terms of membership. We had several members who, one member who moved out of the state, much to our dismay, and a couple of other members who had changes in their personal lives that kept them from participating during the whole year on the committee. But at this point, we're back at full strength. The areas of focus or activity in 2012 are listed in your outline. I'll talk briefly about each one of them. The first part of the year, we worked on continuing the work on the Celine Sculpture Walk. This was from January through August. Continuing working on locations, gathering permissions, setting up the agreements with private property owners with help and advice from the city attorney, and also an agreement with Mr. Detroit for the loan of the sculptures that he contributed. We also completed the design and production of the brochure at a very, unfortunately, sparsely attended dedication at Summer Fest. And then there was also an Artist's Walk, which Mr. Detroit held following the dedication, which those who attended said was very informative and interesting. And I would just also note, in the course of this work on the Sculpture Walk, which included existing sculptures in the city, it came to our attention, news to some of us, that the Orange Rizden sculpture, which is here in City Hall and is part of the Sculpture Walk, was actually designed to be outdoors. So we've put this on our longer list of opportunities we have at some point to raise funds and raise interest in possibly finding a new location for that sculpture, perhaps just outside City Hall, by the steps or in some other place. So that was an interesting new little addition to our list of things we'd like to do. Another, the second item, defining the committee's role and mission was a critical part of our work this year. It was an essential discussion for us because we're a relatively new committee, and the early years of the committee had really been focused on a couple of very specific projects. And so as those were either completed, the Seats of Our Heritage Project, or nearing completion, the Sculpture Walk, it became clear to us that we needed to step back and think about what is, what should the committee be thinking about and doing, and what's its role. Some of the sources and influences on our thinking about this include documents you've heard about before, the Washtenaw County Cultural Master Plan, and also the Celine Working Plan, that was part of that. And then in the beginning part of this year, we also, as part of this discussion, conduct our own inventory and survey of the local arts community. I'll talk about that a little bit more under Point 3. We also worked on establishing connections with county and regional cultural organizations as sources of inspiration, and also practical advice about what such a committee might be able to accomplish. There are monthly, we learned, there are monthly cultural leaders forums that take place, and Nancy Byers has begun attending those, and possibly a couple of other committee members may attend some of those as well. We've established ties with the Arts Alliance, and very important sources of information for us on the economic impacts of arts and culture are the, their Pure Michigan Organization has done some research and did a presentation early last year at the Ann Arbor Arts and Visi, Ann Arbor Visitors and Convention Bureau. Also Creative State Michigan has reported on research and data. They've just, in fact, updated their report. And of course, Michigan Municipal League has lots of work and resources on placemaking and economic impact. So to talk a little bit about our survey of the local arts and culture scene, we recognized, as we were thinking about our own role as the committee, that the Celine area already has a very rich and active arts and cultural scene. And so looking at and gathering input from people who are involved in arts and culture in this area seemed critical to us for figuring out how this committee might fit in. So we approached that by, first of all, doing an inventory of the arts community. We identified organizations and businesses in music, in dance, theater, writing, photography, visual arts, fine arts, architecture and design. We have people active in all of these endeavors in this area. And we also identified some venues where art activity, art and cultural activity takes place. So we developed a set of questions. We tried, we contacted people in as many of the organizations as we could or groups. We, of course, weren't able to hit everyone, and essentially asked them three questions. First, the first question had to do with their, how connected they felt to the arts and culture community in the area, what they saw as their contributions to the arts and culture community, and the challenges they have in trying to contribute. And then finally, what their vision would be of what would make an already vibrant arts and culture environment even better, and how the committee might help with that. So as we compiled the responses, several themes emerged. Some groups needed, identified a need for more or better space, either for storage or performance, someplace to call home. Some groups felt well-connected with the rest of the communities, others not at all, and some felt that they needed, wished for better connections, others it was not such an important point. And we heard from several sources that one of the things the Arts and Culture Committee could do would be to help the arts and culture community by giving people and groups and artists a way to come together. And finally, several comments included the point that arts and culture is a very, very, very broad concept, and perhaps the committee should try to focus in on one or two smaller aspects and work just on those areas, instead of trying to spread itself very thin. So from our internal discussions, from our outside sources, from our inventory, did the microphone just fail?
Yeah.
Nope? Okay, sorry. We, one of the things that came out of the discussions of this was the concept of the arts and cultural hub or campus, which you've been hearing a lot about from me, and perhaps, I hope, other people as well lately, and thank you for contributing to the discussions. The committee sees itself here as a catalyst for the community-wide discussion that we've recently started, and we envision if this, if such a cultural, arts and cultural hub or campus comes into being, that this would be a community-driven effort, not a committee-driven effort. And during the initial part, during 2012, during the initial discussions, we had a couple of members of the committee and some other interested community members also toured two possible sites, just once again, to get a sense of the sort of thing that we might be talking about. Then a couple of other smaller areas, well, not smaller, as in less important, but that we spent less time on. The Bixby Collection is, of course, a great treasure that exists in Celine, and some members of the committee have looked at the collection. Mayor Marle, at the time, Council Member Marle came and spoke to the committee about the history of the Bixby, the Bixby Collection and community efforts to work with it. So the committee has determined or learned from looking at the collection and talking about with knowledgeable people that the connection, the collection really needs inventory and expert curation, neither of which the committee has the expertise to do. But the committee is ready and willing to serve, once again, as a catalyst if we can identify people in the community who have a particular interest in that collection and working with it further. The committee also provided moral support and a little bit of procedural advice to the Girl Scout who was, who came and proposed a yarn bombing, the yarn bombing project for downtown. Thanks to council for granting her that activity. Then a little bit about funding. The city funding for this committee is, has been $500 per year for the past two years. Other funding that we've had at our disposal is grant. There was a grant for the Seats of Our Heritage Project from the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. In 2012, we expended remaining grant fundings, grant funds for the brochure for the Sculpture Walk. The Seats of Our Heritage was a centerpiece of that Sculpture Walk brochure. And then the $500 were spent on concrete pads for the Sculpture Walk, and we owe Mr. Fordice a huge thanks for managing that side of the project. And we hope the city will be able to continue this modest funding for the committee in coming years. We also have talked a lot about grant funding and other possible sources of funding. There are many possibilities out there, and we've drawn in one case on Kathy Korfman's expertise, which was very helpful in evaluating one of the grant possibilities that have been brought to our attention. What would be involved in applying for such a grant, and whether it was feasible for us. So our, I would say our consideration of grants and other outside funding sources has been somewhat scattered this year, but that's something we're looking at tightening up for this coming year. So for 2013, the members of the committee are Nancy Byers is continuing as chair, and committee members are Cindy Baxter, Larissa Farr, Heidi McClelland, Karen Ragland, Lori Rouse, Tim Trokey. Mary Partridge continues as a staff liaison, and I'm continuing as the council representative. And if I can just say a little bit about looking ahead, the first and most important thing is, on February 26th at 7:00 PM at the Stone Arch, is the follow-up meeting to the two public forum meetings to talk about the possibility of an arts and cultural center. So we're inviting all members of the community, not just those who came to the first two meetings, to come and hear what members of the Celine area community imagined as a vision for a possible arts and cultural campus, and what our next steps might be. We'll have, right now, in the process of pulling all of the raw information together, and so there'll be a summary and preliminary analysis of that information and some discussion of the next steps. And the other things on our agenda this year, looking at the next version of the Sculpture Walk, remaining open to opportunities for the Bixby Collection, if there's interest in the community in pursuing that. Moving the Orange Rizden sculpture is kind of always there in the background as an opportunity. And very importantly, to develop a more systematic approach to identifying funding sources that are not city-based. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. That was very thorough. Are there any questions for Ms. Tahar regarding the 2012 Arts and Culture Committee Report? Mr. Rhodes?
Not a question, but a comment, two comments, actually. First one is, I'm glad to see Arts and Culture Committee becoming more active and accomplishing things. And the second is, you mentioned the potential relocation of our founders' bronze bust, and I'd like to suggest that you have some dialogue with Historic Society, because they are beginning to think about developing the site of Orange Rizden's house, which is at the top of the hill in the cemetery.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Girbaw.
Just, I wanted to thank you for the information about 2012, the support and everything that's going on with the development, and really your encouragement as a commission. going on with the development, and really your encouragement as a commission supporting 212 and its, you know, independent development and its approach. I think it's very good for the community and also something that we should continue to support. The other thing, I thought, you talked about trying to focus on individual items and looking more instead of being a base, a big one. I like the idea of Bixby puppets because I think that's an asset that we have that really, we need to encourage upon, and I would like you to focus really on that. No one has really gone above and beyond that in a few years, so if we're going to keep it as an asset and maintain it, I think we have to have a challenge, and basically, I think Arts and Culture would be the one to really push forward on that one.
We have to find excellent recruitment methods.
Maybe, and maybe I can give you just a, an update, if you will, which is that, well, Mr. Gearbaugh would be aware of this, but for those of you who are not, there used to be a Bixby Memorial Trust Committee which oversaw that collection and, you know, promoted and marketed it. That commission basically ceased to exist for a number of reasons. So, suffice it to say, we merged that entity with the Arts and Culture Committee, and from, I think, a purely legal perspective, we made the Arts and Culture Committee the non-fiduciary overseers of that, that inventory. But I think two of our short-term goals are, one, finishing the comprehensive inventory of the entire collection, which includes the puppets, puppets, excuse me, the backdrop and the props, which had never been done, when we, it had never been done since we acquired it in the mid-'90s. And then, second, is to find opportunities to, to display, either for a short term or for a more protracted period, a number of, of that, a number of items within that collection. So, it is a goal of ours, and you and I should probably have another dialogue and maybe expand on that and have a dialogue with the Arts and Culture Committee about what we can do to move forward and continue to promote that, 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 it's really a treasure. I mean, that's, that's, I think, the most appropriate way to describe it, and a one-of-a-kind treasure at that.
Right. From my perspective, I'm thinking that's, we have so many ideas and things that are going on, but that's one thing that we took on to be a trustee of it, and I would like to see us really address that at this point before we try to move into some, and we know it's going to take significant dollars to reserve and keep these things going, or figure out what we're going to do with it, because I don't want to see the treasure lost, basically.
Very good. Mr. Burgoyne?
I, I'm sure the Arts and Culture Committee has their plate so full that they themselves don't have the resources to do a lot on this, but I, I was thinking about the Orange Rizden project and this, and both of those are things that could benefit from a few economic development dollars. And in fact, if you, if the Arts and, and Culture Committee were to make contact with somebody in graduate school that's looking for a project or something of that nature, it's likely that some economic development dollars from, you know, EDC or, the Rizden project is downtown, the, the Bixby project is here, it's within the purview of the economic development dollars, so that some small stipend could come out of this, and some way of motivating it could be done, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne.
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions for Mr. Tahr? No? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Okay, moving on to our last presentation, which is a presentation on the Relay for Life. Yes, please come forward.
First, I would like to thank the council for allowing us to speak to you today. My name is Sasha Zerens, and I am this year's event chair. This is going to be our third year having a Relay for Life event in Celine. The last two years, we've had moderate participation, and this year, we've had really good responses. The community, the community is very engaged so far, but we're looking for more. Last, the last two years, we raised just over $20,000 the first year and just under $25,000 the second year, but this year, we are looking to raise $35,000 or more, and we think that Celine is very capable of doing that. The American Cancer Society is the official sponsor of birthdays, and this year is the American Cancer Society's 100th, like, 100th birthday. The American Cancer Society is the top non-governmental funder of research, and over one, or over 15 million of those dollars stay right here in Michigan, and most of them stay in Washtenaw County. But ACS isn't just about funding research, they also have a variety of programs that help people who have gone through cancer, as well as people who are currently fighting cancer in their families. Relay for Life is a 24-hour fundraising event for the American Cancer Society, and during those 24 hours, we celebrate our survivors, fight back, and remember those who are currently fighting cancer, or who have lost the battle to cancer. Relay for Life starts with a survivor lap, in which we honor all of our survivors, and later in the evening, we have a luminary ceremony to remember those who have lost the battle. Relay for Life is the number-one fundraising event in the world, and we want Celine to continue to be a part of that. This year's event is on June 29th and 30th, and it's a 24-hour event, so it's from 10:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it takes place at the Liberty School Track. So, what we're really looking for people to do is anything they can do to help, and that can be anything from creating a team, sponsoring the event, helping with promotions, whether that be through Facebook, or allowing us to post our, like, event posters, really anything that can help. And people can also host a fundraiser even if they don't want to have a team. So, what does having a team actually mean? It can be anything, friends, family, coworkers, and it can be as small as one person to as big as 100, but most teams are 10 to 15 people. Most teams raise money, although that is not a requirement. What we want more than anything is for people to come to the event, whether that means for a few minutes, for just one of the ceremonies, or to be there the entire 24 hours. And if you come to a little bit, most people want to stay. It's a really fun event. So, what we're looking for is to help, first of all, we have our kickoff on March 28th. It's at Brecken Village, and it's, registration's at 6:30, and the program is from 7:00 to 7:45. If we can get people to come to this event, it really will help us show what Relay is about. This kickoff is to teach people what Relay is, as well as what they can do to help. So, Jeff is also a part of the committee, and do you have anything to say?
I'm just here. My name's Jeff Dolly. I'm in support of Relay for Life. Joined the committee when it first came to Celine, two years ago. This, again, is our third year. Celine's kind of late to the game, getting the 24-hour Relay up and running. Celine's a great city, it does so much, and so many good people here that do so much, but I think Relay is a really big, American Cancer Society, the cancer issue is a really big thing. I bet you I could ask any one of you up here if you know a few people that have been touched by cancer. I'm a survivor, I fought the battle in 2006, so I got behind it when they came. I hope to see Celine become the event for 24-hour Relay in Washtenaw County. We may not be, raise the most money for it, but we can still put on an awesome event, we got some awesome people. If people get behind it and really support it, we can put on an event that will outdo everybody else in, in the county, and that's what I'm shooting for, and that's why I'm here, supporting it again this year, and I will continue to support it as long as I'm in Celine.
And also, flyers that have the dates on them, if the council would allow me to put them on the back table, we can have them available after the meeting. Thank you for allowing us to come talk to you today.
Also, real quick.
Oh, sorry.
I have two free Valentine dinners for anybody in the city that wants to come to our Valentine Dinner kickoff tomorrow night at 7:00.
Which is a fundraiser.
To represent the city. It's a fundraiser for our kickoff at the dealership for, for Relay. So, if anybody wants to come, I have two free passes. We'd love to see somebody represent the city from there.
I could definitely try to stop by.
Awesome.
If you want to leave me a ticket. Are there any questions for our friends here presenting on behalf of Relay for Life? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, if somebody in the community wants to participate, but they haven't seen your posters and so forth, is there some way for them to look it up online?
Yeah, so...
And to log in and to participate?
Yes. So, we have a website, it's relayforlife.org backslash CelineMI. It's also on my flyer, and if you go to that website, that is just for our event. So, there will be anything, right on the front page, they can donate, they can sign up a team, and they can join a team. They can also sponsor a luminary in the name of somebody who has fought the battle against cancer from that page, and that is kind of our central hub for information. It will have the most up-to-date information on a daily basis.
Additional questions, comments? No? Well, thank you very much. This is a very, very noble program and cause, and like you said, Jeff, I'm sure there's not a person in this room whose life hasn't been touched in one way or another by cancer, so thank you for doing what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening. Okay, we move on to citizen comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. Hearing no citizen comments, we move on to the consent agenda. This act, there's a typo in the consent agenda, which I'm sure a number of you caught. In item C-12-15, it should read A, B, C, and then D on the next page. We're missing C, and then we proceed right to E. So, there's a typo. So, again, item D will become item C, and item E will become item D. Okay? So, the following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from this consent agenda for council discussion. Mr. Burgoyne?
I would like to remove C-12-15A and C-12-15B and bring them under discussion.
Okay, so, item C-12-15, items A and B will become the new 13-31 under new business. So, those two items are struck from the consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So, moved?
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, item 10-181. This is the Library Brecken Non-Motorized Path Change Order and Final Payment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 6, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and to approve or not approve the change order on the contract with PaveX Corporation in the amount of $21,441.52, and to approve or not approve the final payment to PaveTech Corporation in the amount of $32,038.09 for the completion of the Library Brecken Non-Motorized Pathway. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne to approve and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahr. Mr. Fordice, would you like to come up and, and comment on this agenda item?
Good evening. Sorry. The Library Brecken Trail has been completed, and it's getting good use. It was used during the Winterfest 5K, and we're receiving good feedback from the community on it. Overall, successful project, good, very good collaboration and use of grant funds, working closely with the Celine District Library, funding from them, funding from our Tifa District, and grant funds from Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation and the Cares The, I said, the project is complete. There are some fairly minor warranty items. There's a few minor pavement flaws that, in the springtime, we're going to fix those under warranty. It is, it's a challenge with asphalt pavement and ADA projects because the, the maximum allowable cross slope is just 2%, and it doesn't take much of an imperfection in that to create a backup. For example, if you had a, if you put a nickel down on a 2% slope, it would back up water four to five inches. So, you'd get just a slight variation in that maximum allowable slope, and you can create a little puddle on there. And we have a few of those spots on the trail. They are very, fairly obvious right after a rain, but they do dry out quickly. We haven't had any problems so far with them icing up, that I've observed, so I, I feel confident that we'll be able to fix those with a reheating and raking method in the spring that we just can't do at this time of year. That's the basic summary.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Any questions for our DPW director? Mr. Roth?
I was just wondering, since there's engineering that went into this path, why didn't they perceive this telephone pole in the way for construction of, before they constructed the path, and to avoid this extra cost?
It, it wasn't a telephone pole, it was telephone pedestal, one of those little structures about this high that has, it's a location where a number of circuits come together. On a, on a project that the design engineers had worked on just prior to this, very similar project, non-motorized pathway, there were a number of pedestals in the way of that project, and different telephone company, but it was a very minor cost and, and quick process to have those moved, so they expected the same here. This telephone company charged, wanted roughly 10 times as much as, as the other one that the engineers had just experienced, so the cost of it was, was unexpected. And then, the, the length of time that they, that the local telephone company projected to move it was significantly longer. So, the original alignment required movement of, of the pedestal. That was a, a slightly better curve and alignment. I don't think anybody goes out there right now and says, whoa, this curve is really tight, but it's, in terms of ADA design, it's a little bit tight. And in terms of bicycle traffic design, it's, it's kind of on the tight side, so we had to tighten up that radius to avoid the pedestal. And because it's kind of pushing the design limits for ADA and bicycle design guidelines, that's why it originally was intended to go where the pedestal was, so we'd have a better alignment. But, once we got in the field and got the quote from the local telephone company, it was just, it was too expensive and time-consuming.
Additional comments or questions, Mr. Roth?
I'd just say, it's a terrible price to pay when we're hiring engineers and they can foresee this. This overage is quite high, 10% or more.
That's not, the, the entire overage is not related just to that pedestal. There were costs related to realigning the pathway due to the pedestal, but a substantial portion of the cost was intentional. And when we awarded this contract, there was, the bids, the base bids were under the budgeted amount that we had, so I was looking for a way to utilize some of that extra money to strengthen the pavement profile. The first avenue I looked at was, was adding an additional inch of asphalt. That proved to be too expensive, so we made a, a field change to the, the full-profile design and utilized a geotextile reinforcing grid and replaced some of the sand with a limestone aggregate. So, in, in total, between the asphalt, the aggregate, and the, and the selectively-placed geo-grid, we have a stronger pavement structure than, than the original bid.
Actually, let me, Mr. Rhodes had a question, Mr. Gearbaugh. Do you still have a question, Mr. Rhodes?
I do, but I was going to let it come this way.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just the original question. What was the total budget for this project?
The, well, the FY '13 budget was 233.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
I have a bit of a concern about paying 100% of the final payment to PaveX Corporation, knowing that there are some items that do, in fact, need to be taken care of, and while Mr. Fordice has, has been able to obtain a letter from them stating that they will, in fact, come back in the spring and take care of it, my experience with some contractors and some letters isn't necessarily that positive. So, I would like to offer an amendment that we withhold $2,000 of that final payment until the warranty items are taken care of.
So, excuse me, Mr. Rhodes, you'd like to offer that as an amendment?
I would.
Okay, and would you like to insert that at the end of this motion?
That would be...
I would accept that as a change to my original motion if he wants that.
Okay, well, let's, let's determine that first before he offers that, that amendment. So, Mr. Burgoyne consents to having that, that language inserted.
Have it.
Yep, Ms. Tahr, would you also consent to that?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's make sure then we get the wording correct. Mr. Rhodes, do you want to repeat that, that, that?
Well, I believe that we could, at the end of the... Well, I believe that we could, at the end of the existing motion, without changing the amounts up there, say less $2,000 to be paid upon completion of the identified warranty items. That would, that would change the, because their, their final payment is still $32,038 in some sense.
Instead of the word less, just say with $2,000 to be paid at that time.
With $2,000 to be paid?
Upon completion of warranty items.
Okay, with $2,000 to be paid upon completion of the warranted items.
Right. It leaves the amounts the same, but...
Yep.
Could you, could you read that back then, Mr. Rhodes?
With $2,000 to be paid upon completion of the warranted items, to be added to...
The end of this motion.
The end of the motion.
Yep. You comfortable with that, Mr. Rhodes?
I am.
Okay, and Mr. Burgoyne?
It's not, it's not clear to me whether that, it might not be clear to somebody else whether that's $2,000 additional, or whether that's $2,000 out of the payment to be made. So, it would be better if it says with $2,000 of that amount.
Okay, okay. Of course, we have legal counsel here this evening. Okay. You want to read that back one more time, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, with $2,000 of that amount to be paid upon completion of the warranted items.
Isn't sufficient, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes, you still are comfortable with that?
I am.
All right, Mr. Burgoyne and Ms. Tahar.
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Additional comments or questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Burgoyne?
On this project, I thank you for the information in summary form. It does show that there's an estimated amount outstanding beyond the budget of about $7,800. And I would hope that, well, this can be covered by Tifa. And I would hope that the budget change to cover this with Tifa funds would allow for more of that than that $7,800, maybe put 15,000, 20,000 in there, just to make sure that if there's any, anything else that comes up, it would be covered. So, I'm just noting that. It doesn't affect, I support the motion, but I'm just noting that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Additional questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor with additional language added. I think we're all clear of what the additional language is. So, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 13-29. Don't go too far, Mr. Fordice. This is the Cross Connection Control Program. This is a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the January 31, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the professional services agreement with Hydro Designs Incorporated in the annual amount of $10,020 for a three-year period to provide a municipal cost cross connection control program, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize.
It's been moved by Peters to authorize. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Fordice?
Under the Safe Drinking Water Act, water utilities are required to have a cross connection control program. Ours was instituted in 2007, and has been, our consultant has been Hydro Designs since that time. They've done a very good and thorough job of putting together our cross connection control program plan, getting that approved by the state. Then we did an update when there were some changes to the law. And they have, it's, it's a full service. They, they contact the folks who need to be inspected, arrange for the inspection times, provide the qualified inspectors, and do all the reporting for the state. So, it's, it's a full turnkey package. It's, it's a very easy and cost-effective way for us to meet this requirement. For us to take one of our employees and train them, and do all the administrative work to set up the 100-plus inspections every year would be pretty substantial. So, very pleased with their performance. And for this year, for the first six years of the program, there was a little bit of catch-up getting everybody in the cycle. And now that all of our facilities, all the facilities requiring inspection have been inspected at least once, we can dial it back a little bit. So, we've been able to reduce costs some, and they offered a little bit of a discount in this contract. So, over about a 20, $2,700 annual savings. So, I, I, they've been very helpful for me coming into this position. It was a very, they're very professional and organized, and just take care of their assignments. And they're always available via email or phone calls for additional questions on any issue relating to backflow prevention.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I have no problem using this outside service to do this, but as I had a question, is how we actually are recovering this cost through our water recharge? Or is it basically part of the whole rate system? Or do we do individually recovering the cost against? Because there's only 338, I believe, individual or organizations that are responsible for this cost. So, I'm trying to figure out if we're spreading it over all of our water users, that doesn't seem how we should really handle this.
That, we certainly...
Unless we can't do it any other way.
Yeah, I did contact DEQ, and I don't think there's any prohibition of charging for the inspection services. But I think the way it's funded right now is that this cost has been rolled into the costs of running the utility and put into the rate study. The actual installations that are required from this, the devices that each facility needs, that, the full cost of that is borne by the property owner. And then all of these devices require an annual inspection. That inspection is borne by the property owner, or an annual recertification, I should say.
I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just, I'm curious of how we should really be handling this in the future. When we look at our rate study, whether this should be something that's specifically assigned to the individual organizations, or do we continue to underwrite it?
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
Of, of the water users, what percentage of the system is reviewed? And is eventually the entire system reviewed?
Right now, the program focuses on industrial, commercial, and healthcare-type businesses. There is, there is language in the legislation that some interpret as that all water users should be included in this. And the DEQ is currently starting to push things in that direction. So, at that point, we would have to roll the program out to every water user, meaning individual households also. There are, from some brief conversations I've had with the DEQ, they're looking at maybe not a systematic approach like the commercial properties under where you're either in the once every five-year category, or the once-a-year category, that with private residences, that it would be more of a targeted system where you would look at properties that have irrigation systems, properties that have swimming pools, and other installations that tend to lead to, or create the possibility for these, these cross connections. But it is, I'd say in the next five years, that this will be an all-users program.
Have we, have we had a case in which backflow was suspected in a residential area? Would we look into it?
We have had some issues with irrigation systems that I would not say are classically backflow, in that rather than water getting pulled back into the distribution system, what was pulled back into the distribution system was air. So, we've had problems with improper shutdown of irrigation systems. I have not seen an identified actual occurrence of backflow.
I, I don't have a problem with leaving it the way it is. When you administer something, simpler is better. And it seems to me if we can leave it relatively simple, that we gain from that.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Peters?
Thanks, Mr. Fordice. This is a, is there any thoughts to maybe having a water meter replacement coincide with this inspection?
We have not considered that.
Some communities will dovetail that in, that effort.
It's, our water meter replacement efforts are geared towards replacing meters that require manual reads, replacing those with ones that we can read by radio. So, that's, and that's an in-house effort, that one. So, that's something that we, we knock out a few of them every week, and we're trying to target areas, like I said, where it's, it's difficult to access those meters. So, that's, that's how that program is working. And I think most of, I'd say the vast majority of the people who are in this cross connection program are not in line for a meter replacement.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing this, because this is important. There are communities and countries that don't do this, and people lose their lives to lack of backflow preventers. And they're full of springs, and they're full of valves, and they're full of check valves and pressure sensors. So, they, they do go bad from time to time. So, it's a good program.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any additional questions for Mr. Fordice? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fordice. And to refer back just momentarily to Mr. Gearbaugh's comments, Mr. Gearbaugh, staff has recorded your comments, and I think they have merit. And when we discuss our water and rate sewer, water and sewer, excuse me, rate study again, maybe we can make that a component of our discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay. Additional comments? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor by Peters, seconded by Rhodes, to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business 13-30, this is a resolution for state funding for the repair of Michigan roads. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution for the immediate need to fund the repair of Michigan's roads as submitted, urging Governor Snyder and the Michigan Legislature to save taxpayer dollars, save lives, and improve our economy by making the necessary investments to repair Michigan's roads and bridges, so that our transportation system, excuse me, can function at its peak performance. Is there a motion?
I'd move to approve and adopt, but I do have a comment on one of the whereses.
All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Rhodes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The whereas that statement that I was concerned about was down near the, well, it's the last whereas, where would create 12,000 jobs and prevent 100 crash-related deaths per year. I can assume that the 12,000 jobs is based on some ratio of investment to typical jobs. But I don't know, I'm not comfortable with saying it's 100 crash-related deaths per year. That's a very specific number. And maybe it's just prevent crash-related deaths per year, delete the number.
Well, yeah, I, this, this, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Campbell, this resolution, I think the verbiage is almost verbatim to what we received probably about a month ago from Michigan Municipal League, who's encouraging all of its members and affiliates to, to adopt a resolution, urging immediate action on, on the need to fund and repair our infrastructure. I, I don't have a problem adjusting that, that last whereas. I guess my preference would be to word it as follows. Investing $10 billion over the next 10 years to fix Michigan roads and bridges, excuse me, would create jobs and prevent crash-related deaths. Just remove the numbers.
That would be fine with me.
Okay. I think it still makes the point.
That's fine.
You're comfortable with that, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the mover and seconder have consented to removing the number 12,100 from the last whereas of the resolution. Any additional comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a comment. I, I agree with this whole proclamation, but the only thing I kind of wish it would also deal, deal with the issue of vehicle weight trucks. We're one of the highest-weighted, and we are the highest-weighted trucks in the country. And destruction based on that is more of an issue than just putting more money into repairing the roads. We need to deal with what's really causing it, and address that, and not only that, but also salt and such. So, although this asks for more funding and to put it all in there, I think we need to address all aspects of what's causing our problems with the roads.
I agree. And I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say a little something, because my predecessor was, was very passionate about this subject, and as such, you know, she now serves on the Transportation Committee in the House of Representatives. So, I think she'll be a, a strong advocate and a stout ally of municipalities in their quest to see our, our infrastructure improve, not just locally, but, but across the state. I, I do have to say, we're not always optimistic about what happens in Lansing, or what's talked about in Lansing. But as most of you are aware, but for those of you who are not, the governor has made some very strong emphatic statements in his State of the State address, and then just last week at his budget presentation, about the need to invest money strategically and quickly in our state's aging infrastructure. And you know, our governor is a, is a numbers man. And, you know, the investment upfront will save us a significant amount of money in the long term, in addition to saving lives, creating jobs, and overall being a boost to, to our economy. So, the, the verbiage and language in this resolution is, is very generic and very general. But that doesn't diminish the, the cause and the endeavor, which is of vital importance. So, I appreciate you all considering this tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Rhodes recommending a few modest changes. But I would, I would encourage those of you in the audience, and those of you who are watching at home, if you're inclined to contact your legislators, please do so, because making sure that we adequately fund our infrastructure needs is, is again, of vital importance, and it needs to be done quickly. Any additional comments? No? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Rhodes, seconded by Burgoyne, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our last new business item, which is the new item 13-31. This will be, we'll take A first, and that is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 6, 2013 memo from Deputy Treasurer/Finance McDonough regarding the second amended FY13 General Fund Budget, and to approve and adopt the second amended FY13 General Fund Budget as submitted. Is there a motion?
I'm gonna move, I want to talk about these, but I want to move to table these, to both of them, to the next meeting to allow them to complete some things in them.
Okay, so it's, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Burgoyne to table this motion. Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies for a lack of second. So, I'll refer back to the previous motion. Is there a motion to approve and adopt as submitted?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Okay, discussion. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, there are a few things that still need to be done with these budgets, and I think it would be helpful to allow them time to do this. In one budget, in the recreation budget, we have a target for the rec conflicts of $180,000. But this doesn't show that. An adjustment needs to be made so that we don't provide the support from the general fund, and that we have that target, as a target amount. Additionally, in the general fund is a need to provide, both in the general fund and Tifa, to provide some funding for the pathway that we just approved. We approved it without budgeted funds, and this budget doesn't have funds in it yet. Kind of hard to make a motion to table before you talk about it, you know? And I kind of wish that we had had some discussion prior to that. Another thing that I would like to see in there is the $16,266 for the police supervisory positions. It's not a full year, so it'd be a portion of that, but I would like to see that in there. So, that, that, that could be supported whether or not anything else gets done. That would still be able to be legitimately supported. Those, those are the main things. Another thing that we had is, we had something called projection, but we didn't really get, get a projection. We got a comparison. And, but we, at the end of February, preliminary numbers will be in for FY14 for the tax valuation, and get them the last week of January, so that by the next meeting... and get them the last week of January, so that by the next meeting, we would be able to approve all of this, it would have all the right numbers in it, and we could also get a projection.
Staff, would you care to comment? Ms. Bennett?
Yes, Mr. Burgoyne, thank you. But I, and I have made note of these things, and they're also on our agenda to do. I made a note also to do the sergeants and any other costs that may come out of that four-day work week. One of the things that we are in the process of doing is analyzing the budget four times a year, so this will not be the final budget. I know in the past, we've only done it a couple of times, but moving forward, we will be doing another budget projection, or in another amended budget, because we do have some outstanding items that we haven't done at this point. So, I appreciate you bringing them out and bulging them, and we will address them in our third amended budget that will be coming in a couple of months. But in your, as we start looking at March, we have budget worksheets coming, and we will do the projections and stuff like that going forward. And we can also include that in our third amended, which could or could not be the final, depending on how that all comes out timewise. But we are, we will make these, so we could go ahead and do this amended and then make those changes in our third.
Well, there's a couple of problems with that. If you do not reduce that $150,000 from recreation and put the $180,000 targeted amount, then the general fund would be off, so when you do your projection, even if you give it to us in our mailbox, it's going to be off when we start the budget. And it would be better to start the budget with something more solid and more correct right up front.
Additional comments? Mr. Gierba?
Just a question, on the professional services portion, I saw this earlier, this is why I was going to remove from the agenda. It says other attorneys, we're going to increase it to $35,000 for the DPW roof. I'd like to have an update on that, and I was hoping that with our new legal team, that we might be able to get this moving faster, because I'm wondering when we're ever going to get this thing resolved with this roof. So I wasn't sure why we're moving this up to another five, whatever the dollar amount is, it just says it's increasing to $35,000.
Yep, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just received a invoice that was paid for additional $17,000, and so that would give us a little more room. We are working on some mediation, hopefully, so as we discussed a few months ago, a couple months ago, I think it was November, December, in our closed session. So, that's why I bumped it up a little bit. And hopefully, I mean, it would be great if we don't have to go there, but I know we're going to spend a little bit more anyway. So, but I will also, because I'll be able to provide an update at the next meeting is my hope, because we had plans of being moved forward a few more steps than we are right now at this point in time. There's some, some, one of our experts is reviewing a report-
Right.
-and it's supposed to be bringing back an analysis that was supposed to have been done earlier this month, so we could proceed, but, so we'll find out for you all.
I was just hoping that maybe potentially our new attorneys, Clark Smith, might look at some of the work that's been done by our previous attorney, because he seems to be continually billing us and billing us, so.
Well, and actually, I did do that.
Oh, great.
And Mr. Smith, I mean, he could certainly comment, but I do know that he did speak with Mr. Lick and felt confident that he was doing a good job, and as far as the saying of, you know, changing a horse at midstream, he didn't think would be conducive based on where we've been thus far. So I don't know.
I talked to him at some length, and difficulty with any of these kinds of cases is they're expert-intensive, and you're dependent on what your experts are saying. And I think that's been part of the delay, and I think part of the delay has also come from some of the other parties who aren't moving with quite the speed he thought. He was trying to get the arbitration scheduled much closer to the first of the year, it's probably going to be, or the mediation scheduled much closer to the first of the year, it's probably going to be in March at this point.
I just prefer you having a check and balance at this point, because of your ability-
Yeah, no, I talked with him at some length and in fairly good detail.
Thank you.
Good comments, Mr. Gierba. And we'll commit to having a more thorough synopsis of where we're at, any legal action that our next meeting. Additional questions or comments? Mr. Burgoyne?
What would be the, maybe Joe, what would be the harm in going to the next meeting to have this approved, including these items, so that we get an accurate view and a projection right at the beginning of our budget? What would be the downside of just continuing this item?
Well, I don't believe there is a downside. I just think that we are doing a continuous monitoring quarterly of our budget figures, and the amount, the targeted balance for the rec center could change between now and the end of the year considerably, so, and as well as determining the exact cost, depending on how fast we move along with the 12-day work week and how that supervisory. I mean, all those numbers can change, it's a moving target, and we are analyzing it on a quarterly basis, so we can always do a projection, knowing that there could be more rec center, or, you know, there could be more fund balance available also. We're just trying to keep it on target to keep it an analyzed tool quarterly. And so, there's no harm in doing it and providing it, but it would also be more accurate if we waited a couple more months and made sure that we were making the closest to the amount, just so that we have a more accurate accounting for it. That was our only idea.
That would be good in a couple of months, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, from my point of view, I think it would be good to get all the numbers in and to see what it is right at the beginning of the budget. And just not passing this today and just letting it go to next time and letting Jeff have his chance to put his stuff in and so forth, this would be a lot, lot better view, and we'd have a projection.
Additional comments? Mr. Gierba?
I simply support what your operations are handling now and day-to-day, and if this is Mr. Campbell's recommendation, I think I'll follow Mr. Campbell's recommendation at this point.
There are no further comments? There's a motion on the floor moved by Rhodes, seconded by Gierba, to approve, oh, excuse me, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, in terms of Mr. Campbell's recommendation, what would be the harm in waiting till the next meeting and getting the numbers in?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No harm, but there's no harm in moving forward and making this an adjustment at the next quarterly either. So, six half dozen to another, and we're trying, I guess from a staff's perspective, we're trying, attempting to implement the quarterly budget amendments, and so if we continue, if we push it off, it doesn't become quarterly budget amendments, it becomes once or twice like we had in the past, and we're trying to do a better job of that, to have a quarterly update, and so we can hopefully have a tighter handle on our revenues and expenses as they come forward.
But you won't have the right numbers. And can you make the projections with the right numbers? If you don't have the right numbers in the budget, at least.
Call the question. Yep, I'm going to call the question. I think we've had enough discussion on this, and we've got a motion on the floor to approve and adopt. There's a second to the motion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So there's one nay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our second motion, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 6, 2013 memo from Deputy Treasurer/Finance McDonough regarding the second amended 2013 recreation bond budget and the second amended FY13 recreation, did I butcher that? Yeah, recreation bond budget, excuse me, and recreation complex budget, and to approve and adopt the second amended FY13 recreation budget as submitted. Is there a motion? Mr. Burgoyne?
Motion to approve and adopt with the change being that there is not $150,000 support from the general fund. Change the budget so that, since that support's not needed this time, change that so that there is a $180,000 target. That's the target that has been used, that's the target that's looked for, and so, adopt it, but adopt it without the support from the general fund.
Okay, so your motion is to approve and adopt and then amend the document?
Right.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? There is not a second, so that motion dies. Is there a motion now to approve and adopt as submitted?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We now move on to discussion, commission and committee reports. Do we have any commission and committee reports from council members? No? Okay. Reports and other announcements. Okay. Oh, Mr. Campbell?
Well, I gotta-
Quickly here.
Yeah. Just for anybody that is interested, I am participating in the Polar Plunge coming up for, in next week. Yeah. Just got a shameless plug, but anyways, for Special Olympics, and certainly, you all know, near and dear to my heart with my son Noah, and just a great group of athletes, as well as coaches and volunteers and parents, so, but it's at the big house, the 23rd of this month at noon, so if you want to come out and get a good laugh, I'm sure that there will be a good laugh, but also to support, if anybody wants to support, just let me know, and I can help you do that as well. So I'm on, I was gracious, Kevin Musson, heads up the special ed program with the schools, was gracious enough to allow me to be on their team, so I think there's 11 or 12 of us, mostly, it's all mostly school administrators and such, but, so looking forward to having a great time, so.
Mr. Campbell, if we want to contribute to support you, are checks made out to the Special Olympics?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm assuming people could pledge via check, credit card, cash?
Right, if anybody's interested, I can certainly, we have a web, an individual page, if you will, that I can send out to anybody that's interested, or also the checks, and that is tax deductible as well, so.
Well, similar to the Relay for Life to support the American Cancer Foundation, this is a very noble cause, and I appreciate you, I guess kind of embarrassing yourself, but I, to benefit such a noble endeavor, so thank you for that, and I'll certainly be supporting you, and I suspect a number of my colleagues will as well. So thank you for sharing.
I appreciate it. Anything, you know, any way I can get to run out of the tunnel at the big house, you know?
Very good. Any additional comments? No? Okay, well then, we move on to our final public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any public comments? Any other business to become, to come before city council this evening? No? Okay, then we have upcoming meetings on March the 4th, we have a work meeting that begins at 6:00 PM, and a regular meeting that begins at 7:30, and then we meet again on March the 18th at 7:30. And our work meeting on the 4th is dedicated to what?
Dedicated to reviewing the draft of the, the current draft of the strategic plan for fiscal year 14.
That's right.
And then also, I think, a continuation of the open discussion that you all had at the work session today.
Okay. And staff department heads will be present for that meeting, as well as Mr. Petrock?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. All right. So, we, again, we do not have any absences this evening, I do have to make one apology, I think I referred to our deputy clerk as assistant clerk, I referred you as your old title, I apologize, and we appreciate you filling in this evening, so thank you, Ms. Rutledge. At this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 8:50, 8:00 PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Gierba, seconded by Peters, to adjourn at 8:58. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.